Montgomery County Board of Education Combined Board Meeting for Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, Central Office is now called to order. First item on the agenda will have invocation by Ms. Kelly Harry of the Ministry Coordinator and CEO of Central Alabama. It will be followed by a pledge of allegiance by Lee High School ROTC.
Will you bow your heads with me, please? Lord, thank you for this school board meeting tonight and all those who want our education system to be the best it can be for the students and our community. I pray for unity where there is division more. Lord, your word says in Matthew 11, 28 through 30, "Come to me all you who are weary and burdened, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn from me, for I am gentle and humble in heart, and you will find rest for your souls; for my yoke is easy and my burden is light." Lord, help our ideas and decisions for our school system to come from spending time with you. You care for and love our children even more than we do. Lord, you have a plan, and I pray for your wisdom, leadership, guidance, and presence tonight and in the future of our school system. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I have to say, Kelly, thank you. Kelly is a good friend of mine in church and small group, and it's a pleasure for you to open our meeting in prayer.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the reason of this session. Y'all need to have some cool talk.
All right, all right, all right, lift, lift. Hold it, go. Present, color.
Ladies and gentlemen, please step up your hands if you'd be excited to present.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote, color. Right, face. Vote, all right.
I saw this one young man walk across there.
We would like to thank Ms. Harry for the invocation as well as thank the Lee High School ROTC. At this time, we'll look at, we do have a quorum with all members in attendance. We need a motion for the approval of the revised agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the revised agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and promptly second that we approve the revised agenda. Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see if I show it has. It is unanimous. First item on the agenda will be recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. This evening, we'll be recognizing a student, a teacher, principals, and counselors whose efforts have earned them statewide accreditation and acclaim. We're going to start tonight with Zephora Zipi Broughton. Where's Zipi? Come on up.
And she's Zipi too.
She did place it. Is an incredible athlete from Lee High School. She was recently named Miss Basketball for the State of Alabama. This is the third. We're not going to make her demonstrate a dunk tonight, but maybe we'll do that next time. This is the third straight year the winner of the Miss Basketball has come from Montgomery Public Schools. You might remember that Jethlyn Walker of JD and Bianca Jackson of Brew Tech were previous winners. Broughton also has been named the state's 7A Player of the Year and earlier had been named the Gatorade Player of the Year for Alabama. In its announcement of the award, Gatorade noted that Broughton is a high achiever in the classroom as well as on the court. She led the Generals to their first state semifinal appearance, averaging 23.6 points a game. She is signed to play basketball for Rutgers University's Scarlet Knights.
Wow.
Yeah, she's made both Lee and Montgomery Public Schools proud, and is mama or somebody we have family and coaches and anybody here? Mama's here. Great, thank you for coming. Please, please join the board in congratulating Zipi.
I'm a good Catholic.
Next, we'd like to recognize Zestlin Simmons of Booker T. Washington Magnet High School. She's got the fan club with you, I can see. Simmons is the 2018 MPS Secondary Teacher of the Year, and she's now been named one of the 16 finalists for the prestigious title of the Alabama Teacher of the Year. She is a National Board Certified Teacher, which is a great accomplishment in itself, and she's taught at BTW for 14 years. She's already received numerous recognitions during her career, mostly, or most recently, she was named Alabama and Montgomery County PTSA Secondary Teacher of the Year. In 2013, she was recognized as the National Math and Science Initiative AP English Teacher of the Year and as Alabama's AP English Teacher of the Year. In 2007, she was named to Who's Who among American teachers. The Alabama State Board of Education will name the Teacher of the Year in May, but she's already our Teacher of the Year, right? Number one in our hearts. Please let's give her one more round of applause for this amazing accomplishment. We also have with us tonight some principals and counselors of schools that are leading the state in college readiness. Will the principals and counselors of Brew Tech, Lamp, and BTW please join us up here, We are recognizing these educators this evening in light of a recent report on AL.com about the Alabama high schools and the highest percentage of graduates who go on to attend college. Brew Tech is number one in the state. Lamp is number two, and BTW is sixth on the list, and that's a major accomplishment. Another round of applause. The report found that 94% of Brew Tech graduates attend either a two- or four-year college. At Lamp, the number is 93%, missed it by that much, and BTW is 88%. According to the report, there are only 16 other schools in the entire state where the rate is over 80%. Given all that, we'd like to recognize Principal April Lee, Counselor Gina Hall of Brew Tech, Principal Matt Monson, and Counselor Mary Harmon of Lamp, Principal Quasia Starks, and Counselor Sheila Graves, and Melinda Plot Jackson of BTW for maintaining this standard of excellence. Please join the board in congratulating these outstanding educators. Thank you so much. Next, we'd like to recognize an MPS program that recently got national attention. Home instruction for parents of preschool youngsters, or HIPPEE, was piloted in Tel Aviv, Israel in 1969 and grew to become one of Israel's leading early education programs in the mid-1970s. In 1982, an international meeting led to HIPPEE's expansion around the globe. HIPPEE was brought to the United States in 1984, and the national office HIPPEE USA was established in 88. Since then, tens of thousands of children and families in communities across the country have received high-quality school readiness and parent involvement services through the HIPPEE program. The Montgomery Public Schools HIPPEE program was recently recognized for 20 years of service during the 2018 National Leadership Conference in San Antonio, Texas, April 8th through 11th, accepting the certificate of recognition and plaque from HIPPEE USA from Ms. Laura Collins and several HIPPEE parent educators and staff members, and joining Ms. Collins as MPS Director of Early Learning, Dr. Kim Sharpe. Please come up. When I told Mr. Porterfield that we were doing a HIPPEE recognition, he thought he had won something. Foundationally, the HIPPEE motto is based upon educating children, empowering families, and enriching communities. The board wishes to join the National Leadership Conference in celebrating HIPPEE's 20 years of service to families in our community. Please join the board in offering congratulations and a thank you to all of our MPS HIPPEE personnel. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate your work. Finally, we'd like to honor the MPS Employees of the Month, Sandra Ware of E.D. Nixon Elementary and Darryl Robinson of Montgomery Preparatory Academy for Career Technologies.
Mr. Robinson.
He is, and he looking sharp, isn't he?
Yes, sir.
Well, we will get Ms. Ware her certificate and her award, but let's talk about Mr. Robinson, shall we? Mr. Robinson has been with MPS for 22 years and currently works as a custodian at Impact. He goes above and beyond by opening early, attending after-school parent meetings, spending time at the school on the weekends, and anything else he can do to improve the quality of the school environment. He is friendly and welcoming to students, staff, and visitors. He's on a first-name basis with students and greets them at bus stop each day. Principal Marcia Baugh and Robinson says, let me try that again, take two. Principal Marcia Baugh said Robinson is appreciated and cherished by the ACT family, and I'd just like to tell you, every time I go over there, he's always smiling, giving me a firm handshake. School looks good, too. Looks good. So, he certainly deserves this recognition. And Dr. Moore, if you will hand him this $25 gift certificate, or gift card, rather, from Target courtesy of Baptist Health System. Let's give a great big applause to Mr. Robinson. You brought some family with you, too, didn't you, Mr. Robinson?
Aww.
Very good.
Could you get her to stand up?
Stand up, please, ma'am.
She popped up and bopped down.
Oh, is she? Does Ms. Simmons stand up here? Well, stand up, let's say hello to them, too. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. President, while you're finishing up talking, may I just make a comment about our support staff?
Absolutely.
This is a prime example.
Oh, wow, don't need to outsource.
Amen.
I would just like to tell you, I was at a Super Citizens Award two weeks ago, and it's where second graders choose their heroes, and 90% of the heroes were custodians at their schools that showed how much they care, how well they keep the school clean with humility and with love and care and go above and beyond.
Definitely love and care.
And I just want the public to know that we, the seven of us, I think the seven of us, I know that we need our own custodians because they're invested in our schools and they care about our children. And so, I just would like to publicly say thank you to Mr. Robinson, but I also want everybody to please let the powers that be know, we don't need to outsource our support staff. Thank you.
Well, I see it.
Political announcement.
Got six of the boards.
The next item on the agenda is the scheduled public comments. At this time, I'll read the rules and procedures for public participation in board meetings.
You brought it up to the top.
Requests must be made in advance and write into the superintendent's office by 4:30 on the Tuesday proceeding to meeting date. Requests must specify the time, the nature of the business to be taken up with the board and the name of the person who will address the board to be added to the agenda. Communications must be respectful. Discussing specific student or employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem-solving meeting with the superintendent. Immediate feedback by the board may not be provided. However, you may be contacted for follow-up by the superintendent or designated. Public comments may not exceed five minutes. The board chair has full authority to terminate the remarks of any person whose comments contain personal attacks, exceed the time limit, or are otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive who continues to speak when their allotted time has ended when asked to stop speaking by the board chairman or is otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive who continues to speak when their allotted time is ended when asked to stop speaking by the board chair or is otherwise inappropriate. I think I just said that. If a person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to the seat out of the auditorium and are off MPS property depending on the level of disruption. First person on the agenda for the public comments is Ms. Katie Brown, our children.
I would ask to come and speak on some things that the community is observing is happening within the student system itself. One thing needs to ask me to come out and ask you, between the three of you, AKA Board of Education, and the state intervenors, can't you speak positively about each other? Can't you work together to improve what we have got? Can't you look at each other and stop giving negative statements to the people who are out there? They are afraid, they are concerned about their children, and they say that if maybe you come together, you can eliminate some of the problems that we have within the school system. Number one, we can improve the attendance of our teachers within our school system. Their attendance is pitiful, and if they sit me out there and I found out, I know you must know that the attendance is bad. They also said that you need programs dealing with your counselors instead of doing all this paperwork. Allow them to work with the children. They don't even know the children. The children don't know them. When a 12th grader doesn't know what a signature is, they're not getting what they need to get in the classroom. We need to deal with the dress code. The last time I brought that up, the superintendent said that they couldn't do anything about it. Yes, you can. When I walk in the classroom and I see all of the teens are bullshitting, if I see where her bikini panted, or when I see them acting like a student, people, I'm not coming here trying to sugarcoat. Our students need your help. We are losing them. We need to enforce all of these ordinances, laws, rules, whatever you got out there. We need to enforce. You enforced it when I was at school. Why you can't enforce it now? You do keep record, I hope, on what's going on within your school system. If we can just get you to enforce these things, cut out the negativity, come together and put our school system back together so that we are helping these young people who are on the streets not going to school, not doing what they need to do. Boy, we will become number one again, and we won't have to recognize just a few of our people out there who are doing good. We'll be able to recognize the whole system. Now, I've done what they asked me to do. Now it's up to you. Thank you.
The next person on the public comments agenda will be Dr. Carolyn Edelman, transfer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm not here to complain, but I am coming to make an observation and hopefully that the board members will understand where I'm coming from. First, I'm not a high school teacher with the means to know exactly how a high school is run, nor the inclination or the time to actually give it of my best shot. I have been a middle school educator for over 33 years. I had hoped that I would be able to pass on my knowledge of instructional strategies and learning activities to teachers who would follow me. Instead, at right now, someone is asking me to go to a near high school at the end of this year. For what I answer, it takes you a full nine weeks to get to know the children. It takes you a whole year to build uninstructional strategies and learning activities that are going to help these children. The unfamiliar environment will be a setback for me, and guess what? The children will suffer because while I'm in the process of trying to learn the high school, then those children are going to suffer until I get my feet on the ground. I was asked to go to Lamp twice. I stayed at Belen Grab because I thought Belen Grab needed to be more than the students at Lamp. I chose that route, and I feel like I'm a dedicated person with means to help those children. We have teachers coming into our middle school. They do not know what is going on. They also need mentors as well as the students. They come into a process where they don't know what to do, they don't know what to expect, they don't know where the material is, but nobody takes the time to really meet their needs. These are my observations that I've seen since I've been in the classroom. I asked, I said, can I become a mentor? Do you have a position for a mentor in the school so that I can mentor our novice teacher? No, that particular position does not exist. My thing is, I'm not asking to come downtown and sit in an office and come and visit the school once a month. Somebody needs to be on board in these schools every day for these teachers. They are just as lost as the children, and you're expecting them to pull grades up. My thing is, how? They are not having the needs that they need. So, at this stage in my life, I have to ask if I could become a mentor. I would love to. I'd love to work with teachers because I work with them regardless of whatever corner they put me in. If I find that a teacher needs my assistance, I'm going to be there for them. If they ask me, I'm going to be there for them. But I'm a middle school expert. I have got a doctoral degree in instructional and strategies. I have two EDSSs in administration and English education, middle school level, and when I was in the classroom, my kids, I didn't have to worry about my kids scoring high because they did just that. Why? Because I taught the child. If you teach the children any test you give them, they will pass. But we need people in place who know what they're doing and have the children at heart. And you need to have our teachers at heart because they are struggling. Our first and second-year teacher, our novice teachers, our teachers coming from outside of the district, not understanding what's going on because we need a plan in place that everybody's going to follow, and then they can fall back on this. So, as a veteran teacher, I know that the last one hired gets the worst jobs. Now, if I'm sent to Lanier, is there a guarantee that I'm going to have a class, that I'm going to be able to teach, or will I have to take a half a year in order to get them under control? And I know what I'm talking about because I worked at Belen Grab, and I have worked at Belen Grab. And you could come by my classroom, and my kids were under control, and they functioned, and they did well. So, I pose that question to you. You need to make sure that teachers want to be where they are. You need to find out what teachers excel in so that they can grasp it, they can own it, and then they can share it with the children. Because I have been in this system over 30 years. I've seen the best of this system. This system was one of the number-one systems in the country, and then all of a sudden, through all of these changes and all these administrators with new ideas, everybody got a new idea. Belen Grab could have been for every two years, three years. Everybody got a different idea, and as teachers, we have to adapt.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something to Ms. Edelman. Ms. Edelman, I want to thank you for getting up there because most teachers that would have been transferred are afraid of retaliation, and the fact that you got up there, I am very proud. I will say this, on a good note, sometimes when you're transferred, God has a reason for that, and you having a PhD and moving to the high school level and moving to the field that you are already in, you might be needed there. And I'm not condoning it because I totally get you. You know, be glad I was sent to teach geography and never had one class in it, and I know what you're going through. I really do, and the fact that you stood up and spoke for other teachers, I commend you.
Okay, and that's fine. I just want to say, with how many years do I have left? Do you think I want to fight with high school kids to get them under control? Because I got a feeling that something is not under control there. I cannot go there and do what I need to do if the administrators haven't gotten it under control. I'm the type of person, when I walk in the classroom, I want to teach. I don't want to fight the children. I don't want to have that. I know how middle school children react.
Well, I do want to say this on behalf of the principal at Lanier. He, from what I know, there's a lot of people that are going over to, he's really stepping up some of the things that are going over at Lanier. I've had some teachers that were pulled out of private school that are now going over there, and they called and said, Lisa, are you sure that I will have a job? So, to me, I don't know the principal that well, but the principal, from what I know, is really trying to step up the game over there, and I think I would take it as a compliment.
I take that as a compliment, but don't get that happening when you get Belen Grab school stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Key. Thank you also, Dr. Edelman. We don't have any sign up for the citizens comment. At this time, we receive this information. The CTE, current tech safety policy, EBV, by Ms. Yolanda Thornton? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Matter of fact, let me just do this. She'll be doing A through D, so I won't have to call you up again. You should just move from one to the other since I notice you're on here all the time.
As representative of Brew Tech Department, every few years, we, as a part of compliance monitoring and in keeping with current guidelines, we have to update policies that we have in our department, and therefore, at this time, we have four policies that need to be updated, and we're asking the board to approve of our policies, and you should have copies in your page. And the first policy is the Career and Teaching for Education Safety Policy. Are there any questions?
You know, I was reading part of this policy, and I ran across the sense recommending that all students participate in the CET courses, which includes the lab activities. Be encouraged to maintain accident policy? Encouraged, or should they have these policies before participating?
There are some programs that they have to have. If all this way is optional. For example, health science program, they have to have some type of accident policy because they're going into old facilities and expect to cover them. And for say for business tech lab, they would not have to have a policy required. That's what we recommend. So, it depends on the program. Some programs have written into their guidelines that they have to have.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure, be encouraged, and then to indicate that this is certainly something that needs to be in place, and now that you've explained that some do, then we understand.
Some do, like the electrical and.
Yeah, I can imagine, I can imagine.
They're required.
Absolutely, I can imagine that.
Mr. President, I did have one question. Um, I noticed in here, again, it's going back to the insurance policy. Is there any type of assistance for students that may not be able to afford it? Or is it something that MPS, um, pays for them?
No, it's not paid by MPS. Um, students in these programs, they have to bring proof of insurance from their family, like their parents. So, it's their parents.
So, it's not, it's not anything in addition to what they have?
It's nothing that we sell them or offer. Any other questions? Okay, the second policy is a career and technical education maintenance, repair, updating, and replacement policy. Any questions regarding this policy? Our third policy, career and technical education life work policy. Any questions? And our last policy, workforce-based learning, um, which is formerly called cooperative education policy. Any questions regarding this?
Uh, I think, Mr. President, by my, just as an example, and I found, was okay with the policy, but just had a question. Who are the, um, if you can give names or, uh, companies that take our students on and employ them or, um, to be a?
In the workforce learning?
Yes, in the workforce.
Okay, we have students working, um, in the Montclair offices. Um, several of your fast food restaurants on turn, offices around town. Um, um, Health Baptist Hospital. Uh, and I just, we're coordinating, and I'm trying to do some, but I'm not currently playing. But we have students in lots of positions. And most recently, some of our impact students in the electrical and HVAC and whatnot have, um, gained employment in the last couple of years. It's only that, um, it was electric company, I know there's one. And those are some that I've heard recently.
So, all we have, and a lot of people wanting to be a part of this and join in to help support the program and bring our students in to get that experience.
Well, our co-op partners in each high school, they reach out to businesses in the community. And I do know, and I hope it's safe to say this, that the automotive industry right now is very interested in trying to get, um, students and that can come to a program and become employees that way today. So, there's a big issue. And especially in areas where people are finding their parts difficult to achieve. So, and that, sometimes that drives our program, sometimes we'll use the office or we can get them to those needs in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Thornton, this may sound like a strange question, but I don't believe I've ever seen you. Could you tell me what your, um, what your position is?
I'm a specialist in the committee tech department.
Okay, are you new?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Been there for twenty years.
I started at Lanier from two thousand to two thousand eleven, as a tech teacher and a workforce-based teacher.
Okay, well, I'm glad to meet you. I just, I've never seen her, you present, and so I just wanted to clarify.
Well, I originally had a town. The normal company would have been Mr. Jerry Moses, when he was out of town at a conference, and so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad that you're here today.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda will be the policy review by Ms. Kim Pitts, followed by the person, they'll update again, Ms. Kim Pitts.
While we're waiting on Ms. Pitts to, um, get ready, I want to say that there are a number of reports on here tonight that, um, I wanted you all to be familiarized with, uh, those particular items. And then for future reference, we will continue to try to put different kinds of reports on your agenda so that you'll be familiar with some of the things that are going on in the school system. So that there will be perhaps some positive, um, PR from the idea that we are doing some things within our school district.
Absolutely. Let me ask this, Dr. Moore. Are these new updates being placed in the policy handbook that we have, the large policy handbook we have?
She's going to talk about what we're doing with that process.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to speak to you about the process that we're going through currently with our policy revisions. And I think, um, Mr. Porterfield will answer your question. Um, the MPS policy manual is being updated. And you know, that's the big blue book?
Right.
With all of the outdated things and the things that you see on the, our internet. And it's pretty antiquated at this point. Um, so I'm going to tell you how we're going to do that. Uh, initially, a core group of people were established to work on this new manual. The first meeting, when it was held on March the ninth, um, a month ago, and they had a month to do some work with their teams. The team was given the charge to peruse the new draft. And we're working with attorney Melissa McKee with ASB. Um, she was actually hired in the summer of last year and started working with our former attorney Perkins. And I just picked up the ball, made contact with her, and we started working on the policy manual. She's given us a first draft, so we established some teams to go through the, the draft with us. And let me tell you about the teams first and foremost. There are seven sections in this policy manual. You know, we have the tabs in the big book right now. And you have policy G V A C and all of those letters. And we really don't know how to find it and what it means. Um, this time, the manual will be numerical. Policy one, policy one point one, policy two, and so on and so forth. But there are seven sections. And I'm going to tell you what those sections are and who's leading the charge for each of those sections. The first section is the governing principle. This one, there's no team leader. Because on this section, this section is only our mission and our vision and our belief statements. So, the attorney said, just send me those things and that will be uploaded into document. And every time you change that or you review it, she'll just change that portion of it. So, we really didn't need a team leader on that because we do have a current mission and a vision and we have belief statements. Section two is school board operations. And Dr. Anne Roy Moore is heading that, that part, and she's been working on that part. Section three is fiscal management, and Brenda Palmer is working on that portion. Section four is general administration, and that's Mr. Dotson. Section five, personnel, Kim Pitts. Section six is students, which is Dr. Kathleen Williamson. And section seven, which is instructional program, is Dr. Stephen Morney. And you can kind of figure why I chose the people because it's the section of the department that they head for each one of those. So, what they were charged to do is to start working with each of those sections. And what I told them that they needed to do is to get a team group of experts. For example, in Ms. Palmer in her section, if she has a part that deals with CNP, then she wouldn't want to try to figure that out by himself, herself. What she would do is she would actually bring on people from CNP to help her with those portions because she's not going to be completely familiar with CNP. So, each of these people, they have teams that they've been working with. And they've been working very diligently. So, diligently that when we met with Melissa McKee, this passed April, which was April the tenth, so they had a month to work. And then to bring her the revisions that we found. And I'm going to tell you exactly what the process was. We all sat in room two, too, and y'all know where that is. Um, you sat in there and each, each person, each team leader brought the revisions that they had. She took the draft. And let me say this, MPS is really blessed in this respect. Melissa works with ASB, but she's already done forty-plus books for different systems in Alabama. So, not only do we have our revisions that's going to be really pertinent to what MPS is trying to do, we have the knowledge of forty-plus other districts, things that have worked, things that have failed, and things that are going to be good for our system. We also took into account things that you told us. You told us that we want to do something different with attendance, to put, put some teeth in it. You've told us that we need a social media piece. She's working on that as well. And we worked on it, we've actually submitted it. And she's vetting it to make sure that there are no glitches or when we bring those things to you that we don't have problems with upholding any of those things. So, we compared both books. She met with everyone in that room and it went pretty quickly. Um, she spent a little more time with, with some sections that add a lot of detail to it. And we've given her our first set of revisions. Um, the team right now has until this Friday to send her anything else because she may have said, I'm looking at this. And she emails me back and forth to say, I still need this. Or really, what is it? She has a copy of our old policy book. And guys, we found some very interesting things in our policy book, I will say that. It talked about the draft in one. Um, it talked about drawing lots. And she was just like, and she's younger, so she was like, the draft? You know, so it was really funny to hear that we still have some of those antiquated things in our policy. But from this point, our next steps will be that, um, we will meet with her two more times. We actually have three paid for visits already. She'd already met with us once and then I did the first sess- session with the team so that we wouldn't be charged for that one. But she said, forget about the first one, when she met with Bernadette, because she's no longer here. She's given us a complete, three full visits. The next visit, what she'll do is she'll bring us all the changes we've made, plus all of the things that she's gotten from all of the other books that she's done, and we'll look at it. Then we will each lead her. We're not going to overwhelm you by bringing you a whole big policy book and say, hey, this is it. You know, what do you all want to do? I goal is to have work sessions. Section, we won't do one because that's the mission and vision. But section two will come and present before you. You'll say, well, no, that doesn't work for us. No, or yes, we like that. You will give, give us some input back. We'll take that back and we'll make those corrections. We'll bring it back for board approval. Once you approve it, we'll, you'll approve it, we will rescind that section out of our old policy book. Now, what we've learned is that the way we have it sectioned off now is not the way our book is. So, we might have to rescind section, this section, but then pull from other places in the policy book to make sure we gathered all of those things out. And then those will be sent to the schools because you would have approved it. It will be our new policy. We will do that until we get through all seven sections. Now, the great thing about this is that we, and this is, is pretty of a lofty thing to think. We think we will be finished by October twenty-eighth. We think you will see it all, you would have major corrections. And we'll be having a brand-new policy book that's going to support all of the things that we've been talking about and things that we know that we need. Uh, we've also found some things in our policy book. For example, we have a very generic index. And sometimes there's a policy listed on here that we don't even have. So, the index, the, the contents, everything will represent what's in the book, and it will be easier for you to find.
Ms. Pitts, do you mind? Okay, what, what's number six?
Number six, students. It deals with anything that has to do. Um, it's Dr. Kathleen Williamson. If you'd like me to make you a copy of what I've read to you or wrote for you, I would be happy to do that because it tells you the sections and what each person is responsible for.
That would be great. I think I got most of it, but Eleanor and I were kind of tag teaming it.
Okay.
Thank you.
What I'm noticing in the district, we have, um, an overwhelming number of people, and I'm talking and speaking of employees, that are lacking the understanding of what the policies are in, that are in this district. You know, they just like to understand what are the policies. My question, we're going to have a policy handbook that we used to have some time ago for the certified as well as classified individuals so that they will understand and know the policies that have been established by this board.
That's a great question. And two years ago, I updated and created a policy handbook for our employees. Um, I presented that to the board and we've been using it for two years now. Not only that, they actually have to go and complain to director every year and say that they read it. They actually have to answer questions. They have to pass the test. When they, if they don't pass the test, we score most of them by computer based. And anyone, like if we have anyone, for some reason, they're not comfortable with the computer, um, they send it to me personally, I hand score it. If they don't pass it, I send it back to them and say, drive in, you missed three. You've got to do it again. And we keep sending it back until they're familiar with the policy. So, this is year two we've done it.
Well, something is missing somewhere in terms of them having a clear understanding. I don't know who's, who's checking the box. I mean, pay whatever on that thing. But, uh, something is, there's got to be a gap somewhere.
I can't be in that part, I can't do that part. But they do have a current employee handbook, but not only that, that handbook will have to change.
Well, yeah, we need that, right, right.
Then, but we won't be able to change that to a policy revision.
Right.
Then I will redo the policy, the employee handbook is what it's called. The, the policy handbook, we're talking about that big blue book.
Right, I understand the difference. But I would just want to make sure that our employees understand policies in this district that we've already passed. And I find that a lot of times, they don't understand that this is a policy, you need to read your handbook, you know?
Absolutely.
It'll be online. It's online, right?
Okay, Kim, this is no- nothing meant towards you at all, okay? Please don't think it is. Um, since I've been on the board, you know, I have, you know, served on the committee's discipline, you know, went over to impact two or three times to do that. Um, and I know, you know, between changing superintendent, state, local, whatever, there are things that fall in the cracks. And we were supposed to have committees that included the parents and community. And we did not have that. And if you get on the community board, Tom Sauter's on, you know, you have parents asking every day, you know, when, where are these committees? And, and, and I think you're doing a fine job. The things that we, the board as a whole, have really seen as target points is attendance. Me specifically, when you see employees abusing the system. You know, it, it, and then I come up here, you've seen me come up here three or four times, and it's Lisa, they bring in a sick note and, and we can't do anything. Well, and I'm not mocking you, okay? But we are the board and we set policy, and I want to make sure that you, and I, I was like, yes. You know, I, I was getting a little bit like, why weren't we invited? And then when you said, well, look, we're, we're going to have a work session, I was like, yay, okay? But I want to make sure, I just want to make this point, that when you say that, that you mean it and we will have a work session. And this time next year, when I'm saying, well, you said we were going to meet, that this is one thing that does not fall in the cracks. Because this is that important.
In order for us to have a policy book, you have to have time to receive it as information, to make additions and deletions. And then you, you're the body that will approve it. I can't send it out without board approval. So, you will have to work on it in order for it to become, that's, that's the function of the board.
Okay.
It's for policy purposes. Um, we're just doing, we're just doing the work.
That's correct.
So that you don't have to write it. And we're using an attorney to make sure that it's sound. But you still have to approve.
But before we prove it, I'm going to go, hey, where was that work session? Will you kind of share me that?
Well, you're going to get a work session, whether you want it or not.
Good deal.
Because you, you've got to look at it. Um, we tried to include the, the notes that we all had from different things that, that we've come across, whether it's at work or whether it's a situation that we heard about. We've tried to include those things. I will say that Melissa's told us some things we had written in there. What we learned, and I'll tell you, it was a great learning experience for me, is don't back yourself into a corner when you write policy. Um, because if you do that, and you miss one step, then guess what? It's on us to prove it. It is. So, some of the things we have written, especially HR piece, you know, we're the rules folks. We have written it, and she's like, too stringent. If you miss step B, then employee wins, you lose. And it's a lawsuit waiting to happen. So, she took out many of our things. And some of the things, you know, we were trying to go just based on the work that we've done over the years. Um, so she makes, she's making sure that we're legal and that we don't back ourselves in a, in a corner, but that we can get those things accomplished, like attendance, um, like social media is a, is a problem. She looked, she even looked at, and I heard, I think, Ms. Brown speak about it.
Yeah.
Um, policy, that's a portion of it. Um, she's looked at ours and she said, well, you all can change even when the trends change. Um, so we're doing some things about that. We are. And so when you see that there's something that you really don't agree with, you're the board. You're supposed to deal with the policy. We're just assisting you with that on my part. Is that you?
Yes, very much so.
Any other questions?
Wait a minute, you're not finished yet, are you?
With the policy revisions.
Okay, keep going, I have questions further on.
Okay, all right. So, any more questions about policy revisions before I move to the next thing? Okay, great. The next section that I'm supposed to talk about is human resources, resources update. What you're going to see is you have this in your packet. Everybody have it in their packet? You have two tables. I really want to focus on the second table, but it's hard to focus on the second table if you don't know about what happened last year. So, the first table just gives you some information on what we look like in the past. Not only that, I want you to understand that the things that you see in the tables, none of it have to do with intervention. This is not about intervention, this is just our common everyday practice. This is, this is only what we've done for years and years and years. Um, so if you look at your sheet, I want you to notice the classified numbers when it says from April to June twenty-eighteen. Everyone see where I am? Okay, you can look at the number of resignations. And this is only during the period of time where we feel the most impact. We know that people resign and they, um, retire all during the year. But this is usually our biggest point of time. And I wanted you to have something to compare to. Um, in June, I'll bring you back numbers if you'd like them, and if not, you can tell me that as well. So, you can see what the whole year looks like. Because at, at the point of June, you'll know, um, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. But the end of the but the end of the year has not concluded. So all you have in that bottom section is how many resignations classified we had from April. And it just has to be April because we haven't had May or June yet. Retirements, and believe it or not, we do have a few more, more of those that we received. Um, but it was after the deadline for us to submit information for the packet. And if you look at the classified, we have no non-renewals. But I think I explained that in the box, that we do non-renewals of our classified personnel in May. So you'll see that number jump up next month. Um, and then you'll see more certified numbers for anyone that we missed. Uh, when we deliver non-renewals, granted, if you approve the report. Um, if you do, then you'll see that number change. If the principal says, hey, this person you left off, or if you find someone who did not complete certification, we had a number of those before, but if we missed someone, this gives us an opportunity to look. But look at the certified numbers, and if you look at those resignations and retirements and non-renewals, you'll notice if you look at the non-renewals, we're almost just where we are every year, regardless of intervention or, or anything else. So those numbers are pretty much the same as they've been. You don't see any different trends at this point. Actually, even took a li- a look at the year before then, and I thought, okay, this is information overload, Kim. Nobody wants to see all the historical data but me. Um, and the trends are pretty much the same for the last three years. Any questions about those?
All the observation I'm making is the fact that, uh, we presented a, we presented a budget that only cut a hundred and fourteen folk, which was a balanced budget in terms of what the state had asked us to do. As I look at this, April to June, to June twenty eighteen, we already next, we got eighteen folk who have either resigned or retired, as well as a hundred forty-nine non-renewals. We are.
That doesn't include May and June.
Yeah, it doesn't include May and June. We are, we are, we are far beyond a hun- a hundred and fourteen employees, which will have a balanced budget.
And Mr. Porterfield, remember that, that does not include from August up until this point. Because we, you've seen your, your report.
Oh, yeah, I've never coming in. I, I think we in the business, uh, we will be in the business of trying to hire folk to come into this district because I know that we will be short.
Absolutely. And our units will be based on the foundation units that are part of the state.
Absolutely. Anything else? Anybody here have something?
Go ahead, my lady.
I do have.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I mean, that, on the certified and the, the support personnel minutes, all of them are, you know, teachers and staff, and there were supposed to be seventeen from central office. When does that happen?
There are two rounds. You've already approved one round. There was one round previously, early in the school year. If I'm not mistaken, it was in January or February.
I don't remember that, but that's okay.
It was. And then there will be a second round, from my understanding.
Okay.
And that's just my understanding.
Okay.
I think you, uh, Mr. President, if I may, um, I think you may have answered my question I was asking. I was going to ask a question about the certified personnel. What, because you mentioned a foundation, and I believe you answered it. So what we, what will happen is we'll be allocated funds for those, those teachers, and we'll have to rehire. So I guess my question is, what is the purpose of letting them go than having to hire them back?
You may not be hiring those same people back. Remember, we can non-renew for a lot of reasons.
Right.
It could be for certification reasons. If you have not completed your certification, I can't hire you back because you won't have a teaching certificate. I'll have to find someone to replace you. We can non-renew for performance reasons. And you wouldn't wanna hire someone who's had poor performance or poor attendance. So there are a number of reasons you could non-renew. So don't assume that it's just one thing that we will choose them back. Now, let's just say, for example, it is certification. Maybe you still have a test that you have not passed, maybe it's the practices or one of the other tests that you have not passed. If you pass it at some point and you had good performance and a principal recommends you, you cleared up your certification issues, then by all means, we can have you back.
So let me ask you this. The numbers just for the month of April, because that's for twenty eighteen, these are employees that are not certified or have not finished certification, and others are for performance.
It could be performance, it could be attendance, it could be a variety of reasons.
A variety, okay.
It could be a variety. And, you know, you have to look at each individual person and actually get a reason from us for that. You know, when we non-renew, we don't give a reason because that puts us in a legal situation.
And there's no way to code it for your benefit later?
Well, we know.
Okay.
We have code it, but we can't put that in any kind of.
Right, I understand. But I just wanted to make sure, like, there's some kind of safety net where we don't then pick them back up.
And let me say this too. We have to add a code in for a lot of reasons. If they file an EEOC claim.
Right.
I've got to be able to say, we did it for a nondiscriminatory reason, and these are our reasons. Um, when principals send in their packet, if they're suggesting some of these, they have to actually give us a reason. They can't give us a valid reason that's nondiscriminatory, that person does not go on the list. If it's a certification reason, um, we do a variety of things with them throughout the years to try to make sure they don't get to that. But if they have not fulfilled whatever that obligation is, whether it's passing a test, taking the classes, whether on line, board, in person, then we have to because then they won't have a valid certificate. Without a valid certificate, they're considered out of field. If they're out of field, then the State Department deems us for it. And actually, minus for it.
Mr. President, I, I have one more question. Is it possible and to stay within the legal realms?
Okay.
For us to get a breakdown of what percentage of teachers are numbers, the actual numbers, the raw numbers? We're not, um.
For certification.
Yes, performance, attendance, and all the reasons.
I can give you numbers.
Okay.
That would be great. That's easy to do.
Kim, this, this might not be addressed to you at this time, but since we're talking about finances and who we're gonna hire, and you know, the superintendent did not approve a budget. He said he would, if we didn't do one, he and Dr. Eggersen would do one for December thirty-first. That did not happen. So I wanna know, uh, when are we going to get a budget for two thousand seventeen? We don't have it. And when can we expect a budget? I mean, we're operating, we're talking about how many teachers we're going to cut, how many teachers we're gonna keep and, and all of that. And yet, we don't, we haven't gotten a budget. So I wanna go on record tonight as saying, um, and this is no reflection on you, Ms. Palmer, because we have, uh, Jason with us. But I want to go on record, because after I read in the paper about how much we were spending on budget and all of that, and how, uh, we were helped by moving funds and all of that, I went back and looked at, uh, the reports that we did have. I'd like to have some kind of report every month, whether it's complete, uh, whatever. I wanna know where our funds are, how we're spending. And it's almost like we need a moratorium on spending until we get a budget.
Thank you.
But yet, we're talking about, uh, spending money, and then we've been criticized for not staying on top of things. And when we wanna stay on top of things, we're not getting the information that we need. And when, uh, Ms. Palmer and, uh, our other person was here, we, he used the unreserved fund balance. The new person is using the total fund equity. And, and if, every time you look at that, you're gonna have a shortfall of maybe four million dollars or two million dollars or whatever. The figures I'm, look, when I went back to look at my figures, they are not adding up to what I'm reading in the paper. So if we are going to be blamed or credited with this, I want somebody to come in here and tell me where we are financially because we don't know, we haven't, I can't remember when we've gotten a financial report. We have not. And then I look at the amount of money, and that was one of the reasons we went into intervention. And I'm looking at the amount of money that we have spent on various things since the intervention. And I've taken it upon myself to kind of look at old salaries of principals and new salaries of principals. And we are spending close to a half a million dollars. That was what the state cost us, half a million dollars for that. Then we spent seven hundred thousand dollars for Sentance. We spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, for Home Depot. Stuff we don't even know anything about, but we are being held responsible for this. So if we need the teachers, and they say they're gonna cut X number of teachers, we don't need to outsource our custodial, uh, staff. None of that needs to take place. And as I have said from time to time, whenever I'm in a conversation, let's just sit down, the finance people, sit down and see what we have. Not what they're anticipating, not what we don't have. If we are already in the red, and then you come in and spend money like a drunken sailor, then how in the world can we meet the needs of our students? And I wanna go on record, Ms. Palmer. I wanna see some kind of financial report next month.
Amen, Mary. And, and Mary, don't forget now, you mentioned, you didn't mention the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that's spent just through a study of the district. Nothing came out of that. And the excess of two million dollars for the layers of individuals that they brought in, so called principal leaves, then somebody helped to support the principal leaves. So all of that taken into account, uh, considerable amounts of money have been expended since the intervention. And certainly, we need to know where we are financially.
Is that gonna be a problem?
If you could let me know the seventeen. I know, there were supposed to be seventeen that came out of central office. And I'm kind of keeping it up, I'm kind of keeping my own list of them. And I, I just would like to know.
I'll just send you back the report, how about that?
Okay, that would be great.
Ms. Pitts, were seventeen let go?
I can't remember the exact number.
Because we were told it was gonna be seventeen.
I wanna say, I wanna say that it was seventeen, but I'd have to go back and look at my notes. But I'll just give you.
No, it wasn't seventeen. I can tell you it wasn't seventeen.
I can't remember the exact number. That's been a few months ago, and a bunch of folks.
Maybe, maybe I should ask this question because I think it's important this time because we need to take a look at that organizational chart before this year ends. Some tweaking or something needs to be done with that organization chart. I don't think it's an organizational chart for this board that this board had any input on. And certainly, there are a number of things need to be addressed with respect to the organization chart that we are working on at this point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm not finished yet.
Not finished? You have something, Melissa?
I do, the, the sheet where it says, um, the process and timeline, are we going over that eventually? Or is that just for our?
That's, that's, um, does Bill will do that question?
Oh, you, you mean the, um, oh, I'll, I'll tell you about that.
No, that's different.
Yeah. Uh, we, we, we'll get to that, um.
Yeah, that's separate.
We, we have it on it. Look at Jay, uh, look at Jeff, Jeff.
Okay.
I'll get that. I'll take care of it.
And we're not killing the messenger.
Okay, right.
It's okay, you know, I have tough skin.
Okay, next item, next item on the agenda, you have, uh, uh, two. There's Dr. Kathleen Williams. She'll bring forward the attendance and discipline, discipline update, as well as, uh, the alternative program update. Dr. Kathleen Williams.
Son, my mom, William's son, my mom.
Huh?
William's son, my mom.
William's son?
Yes, sir.
Well, you got.
Yes, sir.
William's son. I mean, she's, I'm reading, I'm reading what she wrote.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I am bringing you updates from, uh, the Division of Student Services in relation to discipline and attendance. You, uh, have a packet that follows this slide presentation. The first set of data that you have.
You got your shit's your stuff. You ain't gonna have it back.
Don't worry about it, I have it.
Okay.
Well, what about everybody else, Mary? You want everybody to have it back?
No, I won't.
Let everybody get it. Let everybody get it.
I got so much stuff.
All right.
All right.
So the first set of data that you have is around our infractions comparison. And we did this as a two-year comparison, so I went back and pulled, uh, and I have another analyst in my division. So Jana Lightfoot works very closely with me to pull these reports. Uh, we went back and we pulled from two thousand sixteen. So you see that the blue is for two thousand sixteen, and that reddish-orange color represents this current school year. And we're doing apples to apples to where we were last year at this time and where we are this year at this time. And we're really excited, as you can see, for, uh, both our middle and high school grade spans. We've had drops with our infractions. We've had a, a minor increase of those infractions at the elementary level, but not, not really a significant amount. Um, we have identified areas where we can do additional training with principals in the elementary setting so that we can make sure that that number does not, uh, increase and that it, it truly reflects what's happening in the elementary school. But as you can see, across middle and high, and then for the district as a whole, we have infractions that have decreased for this school year. And in your packet, you have the individual reports for each school behind each set of charts. Okay, so the next one? Is around suspensions. And again, uh, I did the comparison from last year to this one. And as you can see, we have had a decrease in our out-of-school suspensions for, uh, the district, as well as a decrease in the number of students that are caused or receiving, uh, these suspensions. So we have, uh, principals, and we have leadership teams within the building, and district support that have really been intentional about trying to help decrease these numbers. And again, for this report, you see the actual breakdown for each school.
Mr. President, if I may, real quick, question.
Uh huh.
You said this is for out-of-school suspension?
Yes, ma'am.
What about in-school suspension?
I didn't pull it for in-school suspensions, but I'd be glad to, to do so. More questions?
I, I wanna make this, uh, comment, Catherine, and it is, it's no disrespect to you, but I, I cannot tell you how many teachers call me. I could pull up an email now that one said, please don't send it because they're so afraid of retaliation. They, the, the, it was, and I've, I've sent to, uh, Dr. Moore just this week, uh, three parents that have just been at their wits' end because of bullying. And I hear it's the same principals. Did I all get a warning? They, and they're, they're not working. They're not even looking at the referrals. And to me, in my opinion, it hasn't changed. I, I still remember taking pictures when I was at Lake High School as a teacher and seeing hundreds of referrals that were not, that were not dealt with. You can listen to the radio, you can listen to the TV, and the number-one complaint from parents, even Ms. Brown has come in here and spoke of this. You know, we hear different, and like I said, I could pull up an email that a teacher said, if you send that, Lisa, they'll know who I am. And it's, it is principals. And I'll go ahead and name the school, George Washington, okay? That are not dealing, or that are not dealing with the referrals that they're being given. So this number to me, I would love to go yay, but what I'm hearing is the same thing that I saw in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. Sharing that.
I need to respond to part of that. Um, I, I did get your information about the bullying, and I did respond.
And, and the parent called me, and I thank you. You are, you're number one in my book. You got back with me within five minutes, and that parent got with me this morning and said, thank you.
So, so what I know, just simply from experience, both as a teacher, principal, and central office administrator over the years, is that sometimes when we hear things that students tell parents, we, it's not always exactly factual. So when we looked at the bus video in this case, we saw where the young man that was complaining was actually a part of the problem. And so it's good that we have video, so we can see that. Because it's not to say that students don't get in trouble on buses, but sometimes the ones who report are not always innocent. And so in this case, on the ones you reported, I asked them to pull the video, and that's what we found. So I think it's great.
So, I think it's great. We do applaud our principals and teachers out there who are working really hard to decrease the number of infractions. And we'll also continue to ask parents to help us so that when students come to school, they will behave. That's not always the case. Uh, and so, we have to do lots of things in our schools other than teaching to help kids, uh, behave themselves in school. But I think it is good that we diminish the number of students who are misbehaving. And many of them are in school. They're not sent home because no learning really takes place as far as instruction goes when you're not at school. Uh, and you miss a lot. And when we look at our report card, when we have students who are out of school on suspension, that's counted against us in many ways. Because it may be excused, but they still get counted against us because they're not present for instruction. So, we want them to be there as much as possible. It's, this is a long road that we have to work on, but we are working on it really hard with our principals and our teachers.
Can you, can you attest for me, though, that those parents that said their kids were beat with a belt, kicked when they got back to school, kids that called them snitches, app, you know, whatever, that there has been a referral that reflects on here? Can you, can you attest to that?
One of the people that I asked to look into some of those allegations. And so, I'm pretty sure she can, without calling names, she can give you the confirmation.
'Cause I, I just find it hard to believe that these parents who don't know me, it's not my school, call me and say, hey.
They would call me.
'Cause I don't know them, I've never met them, I'm just reporting what they said.
I was, I really wish they would call me. Because I will get right on it as soon as I hear and I get right on it. But I do try to give the evidence. We're just looking at bus video, uh, things that happen like that.
And, and what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying, okay? There's more involved. Should there not be a referral that's written on the children involved in the altercation?
If it is reported to the school before it's reported to someone else.
One of the children never happened on the bus, Dr. Moore. One of the children was at the school in a P.E. class where two coaches were on a cellphone.
Okay, that needs to be reported to me. I still say that I can't deal with it if I don't know about it until somebody brings it to me.
Well, we are certainly happy to, to know that you are addressing those situations, Dr. Moore, when they are brought to your attention. And we just continue to work hard at trying to reduce the number of incidences that are reported and certainly address those that have. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Would you, would you like for me to continue? Yes. Your next slide? Is around chronic absenteeism. And you know that this, uh, has been a new piece for us because of the report card and that it is a, a place of growth for us as a district. As of right now, we are pretty much stagnant for our chronic absenteeism just because of the timing. Because remember that this was rolled out to us for February. But I can tell you that from February until now, we have been coordinating with the State Department and working with other districts to ensure that our data, number one, is clean. And so, again, um, Ms. Lightfoot checks our data for us on a regular basis and she contacts principals to make sure that children are coded correctly. And when we find errors, those errors are corrected immediately. And we're doing all we can as a district to make sure that our chronic absenteeism piece turns around. We are continuing with our partnership with the Helping Montgomery Families Initiative. And through that initiative, we are, are, are really, um, concentrating on how they can help us more with the families that have this type of piece. You see that we're, we're talking about ten percent of our children. Ten percent, that, that's where this number comes from. And so, figuring out how we can meet the needs for these families even better so that we can draw, uh, these children in so that we can, um, get these numbers as low as we possibly can.
Mr. President?
Uh-huh.
One of the, um, I remember a principal, a high school principal giving a report on absenteeism. One of the things he mentioned was, um, the walkers. Um, if the weather's bad, they don't make it to school, so that counts against us as well. Are you all working to kinda help address some of that? You know, especially on bad weather days, cold days, too hot days, whatever the reasons are, to make sure that those babies are coming to school?
Yes, ma'am, we have lots of community partners that are working with us to try to help alleviate some of that burden. And, uh, we're doing everything we can for those schools that are truly the walking schools so that we can close that gap, yes, ma'am.
And then, uh, the field trips. I know that the principals are aware to how to code appropriately.
Yes, ma'am, all day other.
Now, let me ask you this, uh, will they still send out phone calls saying, hey, your child was not at school, even if they're on a field trip?
Yes, well, not, now, for a field trip, you should not get a call because the child would be coded as that all-day other. And all-day other doesn't count as an absence. But as far as when a child is not at school and truly coded as absent, then yes, ma'am, uh, that robo-call really is a, a good practice that we could continue. I mean, even my child that's here in the district, I got that robo-call when he was absent.
Well, if you would, if you would check on the field trip when I know some instances.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, I would. Anything else?
I, I'm just lucky noted, when you look on page, when, when you list each school by school and say the number of students missing fifteen or more, and you get down to these schools like Jeff Davis with four-twelve and Lee High School with four-forty. I, I mean, when y'all, when, Kim, when y'all are doing the attendance policy, something needs to deter this.
And so, as much as we can, we're working through, uh, Helping Montgomery Families Initiative, and we do file affidavits for, uh, any student that has gotten past that ten, to the ten and then passes that ten unexcused absence fee. Uh, where we are right now, though, is a conundrum because when a student is still at compulsory age, we do not have the privilege of withdrawing that student if we are not able to locate that student. And some of these cases is, is truly where fam, we cannot put our hands on the child or on the family. And, but we have to continue.
Does anybody do the teacher absenteeism and leadership absenteeism? I mean, I'd like, that would be interesting to look at teachers, leadership personnel period that have missed fifteen or over.
Okay, I'll be glad to work with Ms. Pitts so that we can get that data triangulated. Uh, teacher data goes to HR and student data comes to my division. But yes, ma'am, I, I'd be glad to.
Please, please.
Mr. President, and one more thing, it just came popping in my head, our transient students.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that also kinda work against us when they're enrolled here and they even go there?
Well, only if they, if they leave and immediately show up, then no, ma'am, that works in our favor.
Okay.
But, uh, when there's a lag, when we know that there is something happening with a family that may cause a lag, then we're urging principals and even from my office, we're trying to do everything we can to support families so that we diminish that lag as much as possible. Yes, ma'am.
Kim, if you would add the support personnel too. I'm not, I mean Catherine, Catherine. Uh, the, one of the reasons I came up here, I guess, a week and a half ago was because you had some support personnel, Kim did. Or, I, I said you did, and did. And it was like several of them with like mega absences.
Absences actually don't come through human resources, it actually goes through payroll. That's what the report is, but I can still pull that data.
Thank you.
I can work with payroll still.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams.
Wait, we have one more sheet. What is O.O.S. or?
You do have one more in your packet. Uh, O.O.S., that's your out-of-school suspensions. So, you have the comparison for out-of-school suspensions and you have the comparison for unexcused absences, just so that you could see what it looks like for your school. So, since I had that report, I shared it with you. Uh, just, uh, like the other, like we said previously, for the suspensions, that data has decreased, uh, for our, our, our out-of-school suspensions. That data's decreased for our unexcused absences. We're, we're pretty level with that and so we're continuing to work on that kind of absenteeism.
I just could not figure out what O.O.S. does. No, that's okay, I'll know me.
Yeah, in-house.
Is the in-house susp, I know you, you were talking about that, but in-house suspension, are you having problems? They're talking about outsourcing, I think I saw that somewhere, I've read so much, the behavior interventionist, um, when you have the in-house suspension and you have a place for those students to go within the school day and do whatever assignment, that's the way it was when I was in the classroom. So, are we doing that at a, um, at a pace now that's helping us?
Yes, ma'am, you have, uh, for our middle schools and for our high schools, they use, uh, in-school suspensions. And I am able to capture that data, uh, and compare it to out-of-school suspensions. And, uh, if, if you request, uh, I can be sure to pull that comparison.
I know when I was in the classroom, they loved to go home, but they don't wanna stay there and have to do the same thing, but in a different setting away from the other students who are trying to do what they need to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And it worked for us back then, I don't know whether things have changed.
It is, it's, it is still being used, yes, ma'am.
It was more work.
Yeah, it was more work, but we had more children as students.
Work for the students.
It did work.
'Cause they'd love to go home and watch.
They're, they're working, they're just not running the streets. You know, they're working, they're doing something that's academic, you know, rather than in the street.
Okay, Kim, anything else?
Anything else?
Okay, yeah. Quickly, now, um, I have a number of reports on here, I don't wanna make you all tired and worn out tonight. So, there are a number of reports on here. I've asked them to try to, excuse me, keep their reports five to eight minutes and then leave some time for questions, 'cause we have a number of, of reports on here. And then we'll also get the information that you requested, the additional information.
Well, all this is important, I don't think any of us mind the time, 'cause that's what we were elected to do.
Okay, and we, we're trying to get them on here because I think for a while we maybe haven't had them. So, and then we can recycle, um, uh, but you'll have some more coming up, uh, in the future.
And one thing, Dr. Moore, I noticed, um, on the, you've got a list of these reports, but nowhere on here is the bus report. You've given us the bus report with the commissions and everything, I don't see anybody.
With the what?
Where the fifty buses, in my packet, I had where the fifty buses were sold.
She's talking about this. That's the information. You talked about that at a previous meeting.
Okay, so, but I just didn't understand the commissions.
That's just showing you what.
So, was it?
What murder you got?
But the auction place got that?
I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but could we get back to the?
We can. You brought up reports, I just wanna make sure this was discussed, 'cause it was in our packet.
No, it's just for, that's her information.
Uh, that's, it's not a part of the, um, I, I, we didn't add, that's not a part of our, um.
Nobody said anything about separate commissions per bus.
Let's stick with the agenda. Maybe you wanna ask that question of Dr. Moore once we go through this agenda. So, right now, let's go move forward to Dr. Williamson with the alternative program update. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, you know that we, there is a proposal for us to make, um, changes for our alternative program. And so, part of that proposal is for our current alternative programs. To, and this in your packet, there's a, uh, description in that same, uh, slide packet behind your attendance and discipline charts. So, we are, uh, combining what is now Fuse School, which handles our overage students, and Progressive, which is our community piece to alternative. Those, both of those programs, it is proposed for those programs to, um, to McIntyre. McIntyre, excuse me. Uh, so much topic tonight. Okay, brought to McIntyre and that be renamed McIntyre Comprehensive Academy. Uh, a part of that proposal is to have our overage continue to be addressed, but to over, to ultimately decrease the, the number of overage students that we have within our district. And when we talk about overage students, I'm talking about students that are two grade levels or more behind. Uh, the second piece for that is to help our undercredited students get caught up. So, when I talk about undercredited, that's really the high school piece. And so, that cohort is determined when you enter into ninth grade. And so, we have, and then you're tracking it from that point forward based on the number of credits they attain each year. Uh, we want to also provide opportunities to decrease the number of students who are not obtaining those credits in a timely manner and able to graduate in that four-year, four-year cohort or that five-year cohort. The third piece that we are proposing to touch with that alternative piece will be a mental health support piece and that one will be phased in. Uh, just in my short tenure here with the district, we are noticing that there are some significant supports that are needed for both children and families. And we want to be able to provide a, a center where they can come and not get behind on their academics, but also get, uh, the additional supports that are needed, the other wraparound pieces that were needed, and have partners that work with us to help truly meet the needs of children when it extends so far beyond what can be provided in the classroom. Uh, one thing that has, uh, helped will be that SPAN. If you remember, uh, the state-supported program, uh, SPAN Achievement, uh, net, that was located where Pace is now is behind Pace. Uh, they will, they are willing to move with us to the McIntyre Building so that we will be able to expand our offerings for students in a way of supports. Because not then, our students have access to our counselors and our teachers, but they will also have access to additional counselors that are on staff through SPAN. So, we're very excited about that partnership. Uh, we are, we have many people on this committee that are helping us to build this out so that we're doing the right thing for kids. You know, we have community engagement people involved from the district. We have our parent liaison, uh, person from the district involved. We have current alternative folks from the district who are involved. So, we're, uh, we have curriculum and instruction involved. So, we're trying to be very intentional in building out something and expanding our current offerings. Because as you know, in alternative right now, there's limited, uh, electives that are available to students. There are, um, uh, limited, uh, career opportunities and career te, access for students in our current, um, alternative setting. As we transition to this model, we really want to build out a, a fuller model where children truly can come to a site and get what they need so that they can be the most successful they, they can be. Yes, sir.
Do you have, do you have, excuse me, do you have an estimate of how many students we're talking about that will take advantage or?
Yes, sir. We pulled, yes, sir. We pulled our data for our undercredited students. Uh, right now, as of two weeks ago, we have two hundred seventy-six undercredited high school students. And we have sixty-nine overage middle school students. So, uh, we would be, uh, able to serve those students through the new alternative setting.
And you're gonna have a mental health aspect also at this school?
We want to have the mental health, yes, sir. We're gonna have to phase that piece in. Now, we will be able to tap into the resources that we already have in the district because we have behavior interventionists, we have behavior analysts, and we have social workers on staff. But we, we are really trying to, to strengthen our partnership with Montgomery Area Mental Health so that we can provide even more for students.
That's great, I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
And Dr. Williamson, if there's ever a site that needs wraparound services, McIntyre would be that site.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I have a question, uh.
Yes, sir.
Now, I wanna make clear, you, you're saying that we are going to take all students out of Fuse as well as Pace, and then you're gonna move that, those sites to McIntyre?
Yes, sir.
Right. Now, um, at McIntyre, what would be the, um, let's see, age groups that would be participating in that program on that site?
Uh, we will have all high school students at that site for the overage academy. Right now, that would be nine-twelve. And the reason that we've taken it up to nine-twelve is because, remember, within the district, we have the Middle School Acceleration Project, IMSA as it's called, uh, where that actually can be handled onsite for, at our middle schools. So, we are, we want to keep the middle school students in their right, uh, school, in their right zone school and get the supports that they need there and use McIntyre to really focus on those students who are our high school age. Yes, sir.
And the, uh, my understanding, it would also have to include those who are having not only the academic problems, but then the discipline problems.
Yes, sir. But, yes, sir. So, we have done a, a series of walkthroughs in the building. Uh, the way that the building is designed, we would be able to keep those two populations completely separated. Um, and we have also been working with, uh, the person who is currently the alternative principal to get separate bell schedules. So, we, we have tried to be very intentional to think through, um, how kids move, how the adults will move so that these populations don't cross paths.
Okay, that means that, that if that then occurs, then we will be closing Fuse as well as O.A.M.R.O.
That is my understanding as far as students, yes.
Because, uh, it wouldn't serve a purpose if you moved all the children out the buildings. So, Fuse and O.A.M.R.O., from what my understanding here, would be closed.
All the students would be moved to McIntyre, yes, sir.
And this will be in the fall?
Yes, ma'am.
And Catherine, will you give me the numbers again? You had sixty-nine overage and there was two hundred and something?
Two hundred seventy-six undercredited high school students at the time of the report two weeks ago.
What about elementary ago?
She just reached it to.
A, a few years ago, um, when Barbara Thompson was the superintendent, we had Fuse was the elementary alternative school. And then she decided that we needed to just put them in BIF units in the schools. And I, I, I was one that fought it, like, I'll get out, 'cause Fuse was working for our elementary students. And I know that, I mean, even when you look at the information you gave us tonight, the data, our elementary, even though it's not big, it has spiked. And, um, several of my principals have shared, they've got kindergarten, first grade children and it's that mental health piece. But they need to be in a special place where they can be helped and not be a distraction for the other students. So, what are we gonna do for that group of children, that age group?
And so, this will be rolling out in phases. And so, for phase one, we really wanna get the middle school and the high school piece really solid and get those partnerships established, uh, the mental health. And get those partnerships established, uh, the mental health piece established so that we can really provide those supports well. Uh, over phase two, then we can begin looking at how, uh, we can appropriately either, uh, bring elementary. Now, of course, you know, the concern would be having elementary age students with.
Yeah, that's why, I believe that's why she mentioned the, uh, uh, Fuse.
I, right, so I don't know that we would bring elementary to McIntyre. Uh, really, that it's just a piece that we still have to research in order to figure out how we can serve that population well.
Mr. President.
Wait, wait, can I just say?
I'm gonna finish and then you, Erica.
Go, go, go.
You need to finish.
No, I just want to know, do you mind, quick, thank you so much.
Go ahead, Karen.
So, okay, you gave us kind of a number, sixty-nine middle school students that are overage, two hundred seventy-six high school students that are undercredited. Do you have any idea of, like, elementary students that really need to be pulled out?
Yes, ma'am, we did pull those numbers for elementary and it, it doesn't match what we have for middle school and high school right now. Uh, when that report was pulled for me, uh, I, and I really hate to try to do it from memory.
That's fine.
But it was, it was less than seventy, less than seventy-five students that were pulled. And don't, don't forget that over the summer, we have that elementary acceleration piece that's incorporated into summer school to really try to help catch some of our elementary students up and keep them on track without having to pull them away from their peers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, thank you.
Not a problem.
Go ahead, Karen.
Um, and one of the things I wanted to, when you were talking about your, um, the stakeholders involved in this.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, will you be, um, consult, well, bringing in our local colleges and universities that, you know, special, you know, have professors that teach in these areas to kind of shed some light on some things, just to add to? And then, uh, one of the things, um, Melissa brought up was our elementary students. Will they also be afforded the opportunity to use those wraparound services? They may not go to the facility, but will that be offered to them as well?
Um, well, we can research how that could look. Now, I can tell you that, uh, out in my office, uh, we, we do have funds that have been donated over the years to help with transportation. So we've been researching how to use those funds to take services to kids when they're not in schools where the services are offered. So for instance, uh, if it's not a school that has school-based mental health, uh, people, counselors coming in to help, how we can coordinate with that agency to get the right people over to the school where they're needed. So, we're, we're trying to really think out of the box to serve the needs for kids.
And my last question is, the parents, what engagement, how would they be incorporated in this? You know, to, so that they can support their students as they're, or their children as they are getting these services? Will they, will there be a requirement for them to participate in some of that?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, as we are fleshing out what, uh, the business rules of a school will look like, uh, we are ramping up that orientation piece even from what we have now with parents as well as through our partners and as we move forward with, uh, the juvenile system and the DIA's office, how they can help us when, when everything else breaks down. And I mean absolutely everything else breaks down. Uh, what else can we do to ensure that we get families connected to the right types of supports? So we have, we have the behavior intervention center that is used to help parents when your child gets into trouble and you, we, there might be a little coaching that's needed around, you know, how to communicate that parenting skills piece. Uh, but right now, that is an at-will program. Uh, we, we keep it open every week during the school year, but parents, uh, can choose whether they want to follow up on the referral once it is received. So we, even through this process, we're looking at how we can close that gap so that families that need the supports, as much as possible, we can get them connected to the right supports.
And I know it's hard to govern people's behavior, but I would like to thank you and your staff for this. This was one of the things I advocated for.
Yeah.
Having worked in my field, especially education, I know how much is needed, especially in the middle schools.
Yeah. Uh, one other piece here, I, I just have to have. If we look at that model that was used with Pace and some of the others that have been in place before, um, children didn't stay but a certain amount of time, a short span of time. And many a times, they stayed that short span of time, sent them back to their normal setting, and then they were faced once again, same situation, same crisis that they had even before, you know, before. So what do we have in place such that, uh, certainly, are they gonna be there entire year, semester? Or what's the case with respect to the time constraints as it relates to these people being cer- these students being served?
Well, now, when you're looking at it from a punitive perspective, remember that the, the time has to match the infraction. And so, yes, that has been a concern that has been brought up. How well are we, quote-unquote, rehabilitating kids? So, as we work through this model, yes, sir, we are making sure, again, that we have the right kind of wraparound supports and the right kind of curriculum in place and the right additional supports so that it's not just about the academics and keeping them on track when they've gotten in trouble, but truly getting them the right type of counseling and that decisioning piece to help kids be successful when they return to their zone school. And so one of the programs that we use for that right now is Y Try. But I will admit that it is used with a.
Y Try.
Y Try. Uh, I'm sorry. Um, it is a program that we use with a small set of kids. It is something that we can use.
Have you guys ever thought about getting some of the ministers involved in those kinds of, you know, situations where, by children certainly have been dysfunctioned, to get some kind of guidance along that line?
That's really a good recommendation, so I'll take that back to our committee as well as having professors as a part of that as well. We, we really just haven't gotten that far to extend it to those kinds of stakeholders. Uh, we wanted to have as much of the foundational piece mapped out before we bring in others. But, yes, sir, those are two very good recommendations and I'll make sure that I, I take it back to the team as we continue to work through.
And I might, if we're beginning to have a lot of people who want to volunteer to do things in some of our programs, um, I have to applaud the committees, all of them, that have been working because they very diligently have been fleshing out just the program itself and how it can look. And then over time, it's a work in progress. And so over time, as they implement and start to learn about more and more of the needs that we might have, then we could also reach out and do some other things with other groups. Uh, but I was just talking to someone the other day and they want to bring in a, a group of maybe one hundred men to help, uh, do some things in some of our schools. Also, I want to add the point that, you know, we were talking about the, um, the young children that we do have, um, we have pre-K, we have hippi, and we have some other, um, kinds of programs where we can start to work with children at a very early age so that we can perhaps intervene and keep them from becoming some of the problems that we see in middle and high school. So that is a, a, a very important focus that we're gonna also deal with. And then we have the community engagement piece and they're working on some plans for how to actually get the, uh, community engaged and working with the school district. And so what we're trying to do is get everybody to dovetail so that we're not all working in isolation. Uh, because everything that is happening is sort of a circle. And if we all come together and work together on it, I think even though different departments will be bringing different things out, but, but I'm advocating that we all work together to try to get the best that we can for our students. And I think in the, in a couple of years, you'll probably see a big difference in how our students behave, how they perform academically, et cetera, et cetera. And we have a lot of civic clubs, federated civic clubs, and which a lot of us are members and sororities, and they are asking, what can we do? I'm sure you've been asked that on many occasions. So when they ask, what can they do, then be ready with some bullet points to tell them what they can do.
I think, you know, from all I'm hearing, mine, me and my daughter yesterday, says, uh, team. And it looked like we were forming teams here.
Right.
And when they came to me, they say, well, team, together, everyone achieves more. Together, everyone achieves more. So hopefully, we can get, uh, everyone involved, as you mentioned there, Dr. Moore. And we certainly can move forward with this district needs. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, that's Dr. Benet, uh, bringing student achievement updates.
And good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm going to refer to some of the information that we sent to you in your board packet, um, last week regarding, um, what we strive to do in management and curriculum and instruction. Um, so you did have some DIBELS data. At the beginning of the year, I believe I did, um, address the issue of when can the board look at some of the data. Um, and there are some things that we sent to you because DIBELS is completed for the year. Uh, remember that DIBELS is our dynamic indicators of learning literacy, basic literacy skills, and that is targeting our first graders and our kindergartners. When we look at, um, when we administer it, we do it fall, winter, and spring. But it is not a true growth measure in, um, other types of assessment because different, um, measures are assessed each weather. So what we have to do in order to see if we've reached our goals and, um, have made growth is look at not just the increase between fall and winter because that same measure isn't assessed. We have to look at the previous year to this year. And so once again, uh, DIBELS does have very short exercises to assess those reading skills. We use it currently as our universal screen and progress monitor. And it informs the instruction for our, um, reading and elementary teachers specifically for guided reading.
Dr. Benet?
Yes.
Oh, maybe DIBELS has changed, but DIBELS has in the past been just a predictor.
Correct.
Okay, so what data points do you have to explain the decline in the data that we, we have here? And what was the performance series, you know, given for the data? Because if you look at it, uh, instead of declining, is this the same test the schools are cur- currently giving?
Yes. So you will see declines in those, those seven measures, um, in your packet. Um, so in order to look at growth, that's why I said you have to look at the kindergartners, for example, from one school and how they perform as first graders the next year, even though they're different measures. Their goals, um, so for example, kindergarten, uh, we had ten schools that showed improvement. Um, one stayed the same. So for example, if they had had twenty-seven percent last year, uh, and this year they went to thirty-five percent, we counted that as an improvement.
So, wait a minute, well, only ten?
Are you gonna use this as a measure for placement? Is that what you're saying?
No, they're not. Use as a measure for placement. Uh, they're only used for measures to, um, to tier kids for intervention, to catch kids at the onset, uh, of early literacy, to target, see what other supports they need. That is how we're really supposed to be using DIBELS.
But, so, I'm sorry, Dr. Benet, only ten of our schools showed improvement and only one stayed the same, so that the rest of them did worse this year than they did last year?
We did have drops across the, the district, our, their elementary for K and one.
Okay, are we not sounding alarms and saying what's going on?
What's going on?
We're very concerned. So later on, I'm gonna talk about our interventions, so how we can address this. Uh, that's why I wanted to, uh, frame the outcomes first. Uh, and we did have a little bit, um, at the first grade, seven schools showed improvement. Uh, one stayed the same. And those practices at those schools that showed improvement, uh, are on our radar because we want to see what they were doing to increase their student achievement, um, specifically with DIBELS. And then what supports we need to supply in those other schools.
Did you find a lot of this was a comprehension? Because they can call the words out in a short amount of time or the time allotted or whatever, but they don't know what the words mean. So do you think that might have something to do with the outcomes that you're getting?
So the major, um, technique we have was, really goes back to phonics, uh, one of those core literacy practices, um, basic components. And that is why we've been looking at how we, um, teach phonics, how we progress monitor the students' learning, um, phonics, and what training we need to offer our teachers as well.
My understanding from what my hearing, uh, it says not used as a growth measure. Not used as a growth measure. If it's not used as a growth measure, then how can you say it's improved or not improved?
Because we, so once again.
How can you say it's show improvement or not show improvement?
Right. And so that's why I said this is an accurate way to measure growth. It really does an indicator, um, but we can track how certain students have done from within the school building. If you look at kindergartners from last year, first graders this year. But it's not the same measures. So for example, at the kindergarten level, um, DIBELS focuses on sounds and letters, whereas first grader, they're reading words. Um, so you can compare how well they did at the end of their first year, identifying sounds, identifying letters. And then this year, look at how they, um, attack syllables or attack whole words.
So, Dr. Benet, from this, can we say that our reading program might need to be changed?
We don't have a reading program yet.
Absolutely. So we are looking for a reading program or, uh, with a stronger phonics program.
Um, before, Mr. President, if I may.
Sure.
You mentioned something that was, that I think I brought on way early when you, um, kind of first came to MPS, not a reading program. DIBELS really is an indicator of, of if the reading program that you have is effective. And if you don't have a reading program, then are these score, what, what exactly am I to take away from these scores? I guess is my question. It, because if DIBELS is going to.
So, one of the takeaways is obviously we need a stronger reading program. Well, the other takeaway, sorry, let's speak in my mind. The other takeaway is how do we support our teachers to make sure that they are, at that point, responding to student needs through RTI? And so that's the other piece that we're gonna talk about.
And the response to RTI is the, um, is based off of the, of course, the indicators. And they are to have supplemental material. So if there's nothing there, what are they supposed to? And I know they, they've been told to get things offline. Well, we don't know if these things are research-based, they're based, they're just getting something offline. So to me, that's an indicator of not having a reading program has proven to be detrimental to our students. And we're talking about what we're going to have, this should have been something we had.
I agree.
Because just all of the assessments that I've seen that have been presented to us have shown this as a weakness. And I really sounded alarmed on this. And so I'm very kind of concerned about the scores that I'm seeing because of us not having a reading program.
Uh, may I respond before you? I think as a board, I think it is our job to say today, we need a reading program.
I agree.
Immediately. That is just unacceptable.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to draw the line. And so, I guess, Dr. Moore, what, what do we do?
Well, we're working on getting a reading program. Again, I'm, I'm a part of MPS right now, and so what I see as needs, I'm addressing. And so I'm also working with the staff on those things, um, curriculum instruction, textbook adoptions. Some of those things are coming down the pike. Uh, but also remember, when you have a child, if you, if you do, uh, an assessment early in the year, they're just coming into school, perhaps they haven't been in preschool anywhere, um, they may be a little bit lacking in some of their skills, uh, some of their literacy skills. Vocabulary and, uh, comprehension actually seem to be a big issue with some of our, um, um, low-income Title I-type, uh, situations. And so we know that, uh, that, you know, some kids who have been around and have been in preschool, they have a lot more words in their vocabulary than kids who have not. So that's one of the things you have to deal with. The other thing that you have to deal with is the fact that, um, sometimes, um, these students are not in the same school from one year to the next. So you're not comparing the same children from one year to the next. Uh, when they go, um, into first grade, they may not be at the same school that they were in when they were tested on DIBELS, uh, in kindergarten. And so I'm sure we can capture that information some kind of way, but with transient populations, you're not always comparing apples and apples. Sometimes you compare apples and oranges. But the charts that I've given to everybody, um, in curriculum instruction and, uh, in, in any of our assessment areas is that we need to take our data that we have and then use our data so that we can prescribe what it is that we need to do. And so all of your points are well taken. Uh, there are things that we need to do to help our students more, uh, especially in the literacy area. And our plan is to try to make that happen as we move into the next school year.
Okay. Mr. President, and, and I wanted to respond to what you said, Dr. Moore. You made some great points about the transient, but also including that our special needs children, children who have dyslexia, um, because this is a time test where they are, have highly many minutes to read so many words and then recall. have highly many minutes to read so many words and then recall information or do the phoneme segmentation and what have you. And let's also take into our, uh, into consideration our ESL students who are not, have not mastered the English language. Um, and it was one other group that I wanted to point out. But anyway, we just take the, of children with speech impediments that may stutter. That also hinders our score. So I, I guess what I'm thinking is I was hoping, uh, I know DIBELS is used as an indicator, but is there something that we use or can use that could be more comprehensive, uh, to get true data on how our students are performing that may not be timed?
Uh, I'm sure there are some, um, assessments out there that we can, uh, find. Uh, also, Ms. Campbell is here, and she's also part of that group that worked on these things. So we'll ask her to take the notes so that we can address the, um, issues that you're bringing up tonight.
Right. And absolutely, I think, uh, you know, Ms. Ms. Smith hit on something I think is critical in this district is that we need to have a early reading program and one that's systemic and systematic throughout the district without people having to pull, as you said, whether or not this resource a teacher may pull may work or not. Everybody should have something that's been proven that does work to help children move forward as far as their reading skills are concerned. Another thing I've tried to push for a while now, and I think that every child that's a part of MPS should have access to pre-K. And I know we have some districts, some don't have it, but we need to see what we can do such that every child will have access to pre-K.
Uh, here are some interventions that obviously we have ongoing and leading into summer. Um, we've included a RAP program for the school, which was after-school reading and math, which started in September and ended in March. Uh, RTI, district line is also part of our interventions. Um, we made a big push this late spring to do edgenuity training to specifically focus on standards and mastery, um, of standards in middle and high. Uh, some of those outcomes obviously have helped to reduce the number of students enrolled in summer school. And obviously, summer school is also one of our interventions. And in your board package, you have a summer school page that, um, describes all of the programs we're offering this summer. Um, and specifically, we're focusing on how do we support our fifth and eighth graders before they transition to the middle and high. Um, so we do have RAP targeting those students who have fallen, um, in our lower performance band on Scantron, below average, um, low average to support them in reading and math, um, those major literacy and math standards that they need to be successful before they transition. Um, in order to support our interventions, um, the professional development that we've been doing in curriculum instruction include our monthly PD that involves our instructional coaches, our literacy coaches, our reading specialists. Um, and at the district level, they are in training, they can go back immediately and turnkey at their school. And obviously, in some of our innovation zones, um, we've been focusing on the five, um, ARI literacy practices, uh, which teachers are doing ongoing training, and that training will also be the focus of our teacher academies this summer. Uh, and that also will address those immediate concerns from our DIBELS data. We also, once again, um, making sure that we support, um, credit recovery and edgenuity training as well.
Mr. President, if I may.
Sure.
These professional developments are going to be based off of DIBELS, which is administered on an individual basis. Help me make the connection. When teachers do DIBELS, they administer the test, they do the progress monitoring, they come up with an individualized plan for the students that they are working with. How is that professional development going to address that in, that individual child? Cause I.
So the literacy practices doesn't just address that one element, the individual child? Those literacy practices are solid practices for K five. What should every K five elementary classroom in the LA look like? What are those five practices that we're focusing on to improve student achievement and literacy? Um, like I said earlier, specifically with DIBELS, when you talk about one of those practices such as rich phonics instruction, that's gonna address some of the DIBELS pieces.
And here's my, my concern with that. DIBELS just does not give you enough information. It really does not. And you need something, again, more comprehensive so we can know as a district, as a school, as the individual student, what specifically is that child, um, in need of to, as way, by way of support to help them to progress? My other question is, are, are any of these contracts on here, will these be contracted, things coming in?
Edgenuity is the only contract.
And is it at any point we can get a amount on edgenuity, that, what that contract amount is for? Because, you know, we're kinda strapped for cash.
Well, this is, this trainee is on the curve within our still same contract. It goes to end of October.
Okay, the end of October.
That's not a new contract.
Okay. Um, my other question, uh, and I swear I'll, I'll be done. Um, the curriculum specialists, how much of, how much participation are they having in helping to help our, whoever does the PD make sure that we're putting, um, the right types of things in place?
So the curriculum specialists are involved in all of our professional development, specifically our teacher academy, um, edgenuity training, uh, all of the curriculum specialists are involved in the training so that they can support teachers and schools in their roles to use credit, credit recovery. And they attend every PD that they are not directly presenting, such as they, they attend the circle PD and they actually support the ARI literacy practices training and are involved in the presentations that occur during the teacher academies.
Okay. And my other question is, uh, in relations to going back to the reading program, forgive me. Are principal, um, leads allowed to pick reading programs for school? What, what exactly, how do they fit in? I'm just trying to put all the pieces together.
So remember that the curriculum decisions are ultimately, um, rest in the areas of curriculum instruction. I think that our principal leads are very, um, informed of the needs of their individual schools and zones and can make recommendations.
Okay. So, so they make curriculum decisions as well as helping the principals, is that what you're saying?
I believe that's what I guess.
So if that's the case, then why can't our principal, I mean, our curriculum specialist be principal leads? I mean, it's just a thought.
I assume that's rhetorical.
Dr. Bornier, I just want to let you know something that I've been, uh, alluded to earlier, but that, um, super citizens program that I was at. I just want you to know that that, um, group was very complimentary of somebody that works in your office, um, and how they, y'all have been very accommodating, um, and that's such an important program regarding curriculum, but with citizenship. And, um, I just wanna thank you for letting that happen. And I know that y'all have been trying to figure out fifth grade or to, whether to do third or fourth grade. And I just wanna encourage you while I have you captive to please try to figure that out because I think citizenship all the way through is so important. Um, and I think it'll help with our behavior and, you know, just kind of help with a lot of things.
Absolutely. And we're hoping to bring it back at both those target grades for next school year's second year.
And maybe even middle school.
Uh, one more question, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just a passion of mine. I, I, you know, I wanna make sure our students have everything they need and it needs to operate flawlessly. Um, but what I did wanna bring up is that I see the list, I saw the list of, um, programs and professional developments that would be offered. I did not see Brain Forest on the list of the summer school program. So is it true that Brain Forest will be presented for approval?
Uh, yes, and I'll defer that to our superintendent.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We have had some discussion about Brain Forest, and I'm really looking into, um, the kind of growth that our students might have in that program because I'm, if I'm understanding this coming in on the tallying of, of what we've been doing is that there is now a cost attached to that of about, um, a hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken. And so before I make that recommendation to you, I wanna make sure that what I'm recommending, uh, in way of a program, uh, will give us some of the results that we are talking about here tonight.
Yeah, and I, I would like, uh, you know, for years, I've been looking at those participants who have been taking a part in that Brain Forest, follow them through the next year and see whether that has really impacted their learning in terms of those two to three months and how it tends to carry over. Or even if there's that kind of growth that's occurring with those children who are participating in that program. I think that information needs to be shared. Follow those children, not just during that summer, but then what occurred after that, um, you know, participation and group and see if it had a very positive impact. I think that information needs to be known.
And, Mr. President, if I may, address, uh, the superintendent. I see a, a list of everything that we're doing, but my question is, uh, are we doing too mu- are we doing too much rather than having a single focus? So do we need all of this, or do we need to kind of narrow it down to some specifics? I'm just.
Are you talking about summer or overall?
Well, let's say overall.
Okay. So what I've done with the staff is I've asked them actually to give me a list of everything that we're doing because I'm, I'm kinda concerned in the same way that, um, that sometimes you might be doing too much. So that's a good question. Um, we're looking into all of the things we have to offer, uh, that have we've been offering maybe for two or three years, and they're all out there in the schools. So I am collecting that information. I'm not prepared at this time to, to answer that, but, you know, just speaking, that is part of what I'm trying to look at to, to see if we are actually doing more than we should be doing or need to do.
I can afford.
Thank you.
I can afford.
Uh, the next item on the agenda will be the discussion regarding superintendent selection. Uh, I've had a meeting, each, each of you should have a sheet like this in front of you, process and timeline for superintendent selection. I did a week with Ms. Pitts today. Here's what we have somewhat come up with with respect to the process and timeline, if you would. You'll notice here that on April eighteenth, the posting for the position of superintendent will close, and that will be on Wednesday. From the nineteenth through the twenty-third, applicants will be screened by the MPS staff in resources to, uh, determine the qualified applicants. April twenty-fifth, that's when we, the board, will meet, and we'll have a special call meeting. Now, we poll and see what time we can all meet. And I think the last time we met, we were, um, in, to, to determine now the applicants that we will, uh, interview. And then once we do that, we'll have a solidified list of interview questions. The references will be checked. On May first, twenty eighteen, the board will conduct interviews of selected candidates in another special call board meeting. At the conclusion, at the conclusion of that final interview, the board will hold an executive session to discuss any areas pertinent to good name and character of the candidates. We'll last a little board with voting the position. Now, May second to the tenth, we can negotiate contracts. And maybe before, our tentative date for the superintendent start would be somewhere around the neighborhood of May thirtieth. Is that okay? Now, for this, um, for the, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, we'll, you know, see what time, we'll poll the board, see what time that we all can get together. Okay, you ready to listen?
Mr. Phil, I just wanna say, uh, on the May first, when we conduct the interviews, I know that there are going to be several of us attending a, um, candidate forum.
Oh, that's that afternoon.
Yeah, at, well, I think it's at six.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to request that we start early.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
So that we can do the interviews and I'll be able to go to that forum.
Yeah, maybe we can do them for twelve, and then, uh, if we can, maybe, and I've seen it whereby we can do, if it's that many, we do, we're gonna hang it down to about five. We can do three one day and come back and do three another. You know, we don't have to do them all the same day, will we? I mean, we can, we can discuss that among ourselves and see how it works out for us.
I will. I just, you know, when I saw that on my calendar, I just.
I did too. Thank you for reminding. Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda will be fresh and knowing house and worship contract. Community schools, Mr. Leish.
Did we pick a time?
Huh?
Were we gonna pick a time?
Uh, we, we're, we're gonna poll. We, we'll call. We'll get that straight. We're not gonna place the time down now.
Obviously not.
That's what I was trying to say. We'll poll the board. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. Good evening. We have a contract for four through four, um, here for a reservation program. So we held on May third, um, at the church worship, we were giving this campus one contract. Do you have any questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. There are no questions. We can move on. Yeah. Uh, next we have the intervention personnel report of non-renewal principals. Who's supposed to get that? Intervention personnel report of non-renewal principals.
Oh, right here, right here.
Oh, Mr. Doctor Edison.
What you have are your names of those individuals with contracts for not being renewed?
Oh, intervention personnel.
Which package is that?
I saw that.
It's this one, this one.
It's the intervention personnel report.
Okay.
So is that permanent? Because, you know, I've got one on here that I've got a little fur in my saddle about.
If the person that is permanent, unless you, uh, see a need to hire someone back, those individuals will have every right to apply for any job if they feel qualified.
Well, I'm just gonna say without naming names, that I think it is a travesty that we, once again, have a school that's got another principal. That's my school, and I think that things have been a lot calmer this year since we've had this leadership with this person. And to change again, I think it's just wrong. And I'd really like y'all to pull that and reconsider that.
Um, and if I may, Mr. President, I know that, um, some of them, I noticed a, a few names where principals have been effective, um, in their jobs where schools, excuse me, have come off of the, um, in, in the state word spelling list. Uh, I would hope that some consideration would be taken into account there because whatever they're doing is working. And I would hate for, and this, and some of these schools are just like what Melissa said, have had a few principals. Uh, and just, you know, give them an opportunity to see how much more growth they can bring to their schools. And, um, so I'd just like for you just to consider, do I need to give numbers or?
I'd like you to. Mine is number three.
Uh, I'm looking at number one and number two.
I'm looking at number two myself.
I, I'm just gonna say this. There is one particular principal that has gotten in trouble with the law, um, and has handled things inappropriately with interpersonal relationships, but they were not questioned and were up for renewal, and they got renewed. And yet you've got other people that are doing the best they can and working and trying to turn things around, and they're on this list. And that just really ticks me off. I guess it's amazing. You just, sorry, but that's just the way I feel.
And as my understanding, that, that number two on the year, I've been working and talking all year. This one, and some things have been going real well out there, so I wouldn't even understand why should we even be considered a part of this recall? Number ten.
It just seems like we asked, all seven of us asked for intervention because we wanted help. And I'm, you know, Richardson said we weren't owning our problems. I think you own your problems when you ask for help. And, um, one of the things that y'all came in, and please don't think I'm just barking at you because I do like you as a person. Um, but culture and climate was supposed to be changed. And I think that all of us would agree that that, that's a good thing. But I don't see culture and climate being changed by these kind of intervention personnel minutes.
Well, I tell you, um, uh, do we have the intervention personnel minutes that are to be voted on separately here?
No, sir.
Well, they're not to be voted on at all, are they? I don't see it as an action item. That's not going on that. Oh, so they're just taking and doing what they want? Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, well. Okay, and they just do, and notice wasn't much response behind it either of, of Melissa? They just said, "Where's in writing?" Okay, let's move on. Um, board action items, Superintendent Moore. Board action items, Superintendent Moore.
Okay. Personnel report certified. I recommend approval of the personnel report, the certified one, and we're going to omit number two oh nine.
Two oh nine.
Number two oh nine. Otherwise, the rest of it will be part of the rest of the session.
Okay.
Two oh nine in the certified personnel?
Certified, uh-huh.
So take, take two oh nine out of that recommendation.
Oh, I see what he had.
And then also one ninety-nine, or one ninety-nine?
No, she said, two zero nine.
So this little thing of one ninety-nine doesn't matter?
Two zero nine.
And then on the front of the-
It's two different.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, two zero nine, is what she said. You just take it just for two zero nine. The other, well, he got two.
Is it two oh eight or two oh nine?
Leave it to it, well, no. No. Two oh nine. Okay.
Mr. President? Oh, sorry.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation on the certified personnel with the exceptions of the numbers mentioned, two oh nine.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept superintendent's recommendation of the personnel certified proposal. Any discussion?
I would like to make a comment. I know we're about to make a decision based on what y'all were talking about, these five or six principals that are on this list.
No.
They're not, they're not on here. I'm not on here, they don't have a say in that.
Okay, but I want to make this comment if I could. I'm behaving myself today, I think, so could I please make a statement? What's the difference in keeping, if we're going to fuss about keeping good principals, why are we, I mean, we're letting go a lot of really good non-renewed teachers too. It's the same argument. It's the same argument. And you know, when we're making a tough decision on principals, when we do, I think you have to understand you're making the same tough decisions on over a hundred ninety-nine teachers. Some of them that are really quite good. And you can give the argument that you have principals that should be gone, it's the same argument for teachers. We're keeping bad teachers and letting good teachers go. I just wanted to make the statement, when y'all make your decisions.
Those who are in favor, let's see if I show up.
I tend to agree with Dr. Keith on this, because number one, if you look at, first of all, Dr. Richardson said X number of teachers and all. And I'm looking at the number of magnet schools that are involved in this, about the traditional schools that are involved in this. And I know you've had this conversation with HR about the fact that some of them have not got everything they need for how to qualify. But have you looked at the fact that we have lost a lot of teachers to Georgia, to Prattville, to Torgerville, and all of that? And we ought to make sure, absolutely certain, that we don't non-renew all these people and end up with school and have a hundred substitutes, permanent substitutes. I wouldn't let my child go to a school that had a permanent substitute for a whole year. It doesn't make any sense. And for us to sit here and vote on this report without even knowing what our budget is, like I've just talked to this problem, we don't know what we have, we don't know what we don't have, and yet, we're going to sit here and for the same thing like Lisa said about the principals, you could say that about a lot of these teachers on here. And I think, to me, it's just downright stupid.
And we're driving off some excellent teachers. There's a lot of math teachers on here, I mean, we're, we got the hell, you know?
Foreign language, science.
Yeah, science, I'm like, why are we driving some of the best off?
Because we don't know what, right now, we don't know where our funds are, we don't know what we have. And we got a finance person who, I don't know if he understands some of this. So I just think that before we sit here, let me finish. Before we sit here and vote on all of these teachers, where we don't know who we know, we don't know who's really qualified in years past, before we non-renewed their hardship types of things like science, math, foreign language, and all of that, we talk to those principals and say, could we do something other than non-renew? Because these people getting non-renewed, they're going somewhere else. And if, when we all start school, I guess board members will have to start taking some slack.
Yeah. Can we do this, Melissa? Can we do this? Let me just ask if we can, let me just put something out here for you.
Got to have.
Since we have this kind of problem here. Could we just move on the resignation, could we move on the resignations and the retirements, and all the non-renewals, just hold them out, and maybe have another meeting to address that?
I'll make the-
Could we move on all of the resignations as well as retirements? We could move on that.
Okay, so here we go, here's my motion. I move that we table all of the non-renewals.
Move on the resignations and retirements.
Hold on, you want what?
Mary.
A friend, she said, whoever made it, so they would.
Okay, and that we need to do. Okay, so, but- Yeah, you have supplements in your- And we got to vote on those.
Yes.
But what we can do-
Well, she said just take out the non-renewed and-
And move on the resignations, retirements, and those supplements.
But if we pull out the non-renewals, everything else?
That's right. Just pull out the non-renewals.
That's why I was going to make the motion that way.
Right, just pull all the non-renewals. That's the motion?
No, just a second. Uh-uh, hold on. Look at, in your packet, look at two oh eight and two oh nine.
Sorry.
Same picture, same person, right?
Yes, but, but just, I'll give you for the discussion session.
Okay, so.
Two oh eight and two oh nine, omit them.
Okay, two oh eight, two oh nine.
Two oh eight and two oh nine, do one.
Two zero eight, two zero nine. It was just two oh eight, two, two zero nine in the beginning. Now you added two zero eight as well as two zero nine as a part to be taken off anyone.
Okay, all right, so, Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules. I think I need to make that motion first.
Okay.
So I need a second.
Second.
It is, we move the proper second that we suspend the rules.
Okay, I'm ready for the question.
Those who are in favor, let's see if I show up hands. It is unanimous.
All right, so, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we, we move, we're going to adopt the certified personnel minutes, except for number two oh eight, two oh nine.
One ninety-nine.
No, not one ninety-nine.
One ninety-nine, two oh eight, two oh nine.
So we're going to pull out two oh eight, two oh nine, and all of the non-renewals.
Right, that'll get it.
Got it. I need a second.
Second. It is moving and probably second that we move in a manner that Ms. Norton has mentioned.
You got to restate it.
Okay, well, I was trying to get away with not having to do that. Well, we can say that, with the exception of two oh eight, two oh nine, and the non-renewals. So, do we have a second? We did, I seconded it. Okay, it's added discussion then. It's been moved and seconded, properly seconded. Those who are in favor, let's see if I show up hands. It is unanimous.
No, it's not.
Who is that?
And we didn't vote.
Oh, it's not unanimous, six, those are against? Oh, abstentions?
She's abstaining.
Abstentions, one abstention.
All right.
You're damn right.
Are you ready?
All right, let's move on.
Okay. I should have asked it, and I'm sorry. Where you going?
Go ahead, Mary.
Is this going to be a new cost center when we were talking about McIntyre? What's going to happen to Hambor Road?
Well, that's not now.
Huh? I just want to know for my-
I don't think they all moved on that yet, have they? She's asking for information, FYI. Well, she just gave us information, didn't she?
I know, but she's still going forward with her plans. I just need to know for my sake.
That's correct, I think it's important.
Yes, ma'am, we are working with assessment to determine whether we need to proceed with keeping it as a cost center, because we don't want to do any damage to our benefit. So it may be that they vote continuous programs. Plus, Ms. Alatola has brought to our awareness that with the federal changes, we need to revisit how those cost centers are coded. So more discussion is occurring.
And don't you think that's a legitimate question to ask? Okay, I thought so.
It's really legitimate.
You know, I had hit on that a little bit during that mission. Okay, which one are we, which one are we talking? Okay, which one is that? Or the first one?
Am I doing that?
All right, are we ready to move?
We're ready for eight.
All right. I recommend approval of the personnel report on support personnel.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the support personnel report.
Second, it has been moved and properly seconded that we approve the support personnel report. Is there any discussion? None, those who are in favor, let's see if I show up hands. It is unanimous.
Yeah, because they are retired of that.
Okay, moving on, I recommend, I recommend approval of the board minutes of March twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the board minutes for March twenty-second.
I second it.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we approve the superintendent's recommendation of the board minutes for March twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see if I show up hands. It is unanimous.
Mr. President, can we adopt D, E, F, and G together?
I would believe that would be a good thing. All three with the career problem, could we just connect those and just make one more?
Sure. I recommend, I recommend approval of policies D, E, F, and G.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the policies for career tech for item A, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we approve the policies for A, D, three, G? Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see if I show up hands. It is unanimous.
I recommend approval of the fresh and known house worship contract community schools.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the recommendation of A, H, H.
H, it's fresh and known house worship contract.
I'll second. Yeah.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we, we accept the superintendent's recommendation of the contract for the house worship. Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see if I show up hands. It is unanimous. Okay, that tends to bring, that tends to bring. Our next meeting dates will be Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, two thirty P.M. We will have board training at central office. On Tuesday, May fifteenth, at five P.M., we will have our combined board meeting will be at central office. At this time, this meeting is adjourned.